My name is Gabriela Tevidian and I'm the Superintendent and I will also be your presenter for tonight. Thank you, Mr. Gomez. I want to begin by welcoming our families in our community. And I want to thank you all for being here because your presence here tonight shows that you have a care and an investment in our community. But before I begin my presentation, I do want to acknowledge you all. Because your presence here shows tonight that there is a care and a validation for the feelings that you may be having. The fact that I see so many here with your Felton T-shirts on tonight, it's because you're here with an expression of either... Sorry, let me stand away from that. Whether it's sadness, whether it's fear, whether it's frustration, it's all because you are here to express a feeling because of your school. It could be a combination of all of these feelings and I want to acknowledge and validate all of these feelings for you that you're feeling tonight as a member of the Felton community or the staff. Know that your feelings are valid and I wish that I had all of the right words to share with you as either parent, as student, or as faculty. At this particular time, because we know that as humans, we all deal with information and possible change in our very own way. I know I'm not a former Lennox student, I'm not a former Lennox teacher, or an employee, or resident, and I don't have those wonderful rich stories that many of you that have about Felton School or of Lennox itself. But I can tell you this, in the four years that I've been here, that I've been blessed to call this my second home. I have developed many great stories and I can tell you a lot of wonderful stories myself of visiting the schools and I know that every one of our schools is a jewel. And that every single employee that works at every single one of our schools does so because they love the students and the community. And that's why it is very difficult to stand here tonight before all of you to share the information that I will be sharing. But I must because it's the right thing to do and it's the courageous thing to do to ensure the future of our district. Declining enrollment is impacting our district and that there is no solution in increasing our enrollment to what it was five to 10 years ago. It's only going to get worse. We're going to continue to decrease in student numbers and our yearly funding will continue to decrease each year impacting our staff and our educational programs. Our Lennox district as we know it will not be able to survive if we do not act now. And that is why I must move forward with my recommendation to the board with the school consolidation. It is my hope that you will all listen with open hearts and minds to the content of tonight's town hall to understand the reasons for the consolidation, that we can all come together for our students' futures. We are going to begin tonight with the purpose of the town hall and I would like to introduce my co-presenter tonight, Mr. Taylor. Mr. Taylor is here from MGT Consulting Services and he has been providing our district guidance since April when we began to have these difficult conversations with our Board of Education and Superintendent's Advisory Council. Mr. Taylor is going to get started with some recommendations to ensure that our town hall runs smoothly tonight. Please help me welcome Mr. Taylor.
Well, good evening ladies and gentlemen and as students and thank you all for being here tonight to talk about this very difficult subject. As Superintendent just mentioned, I am with MGT Consulting and I've helped the district go through a process on how to consolidate some of the schools. That process has lasted for about six months and during those six months, the district went through a specific process and it yielded a recommendation. Let me be clear, what we have is a recommendation that will be presented to you tonight. The final decision has not been made. At this point, the final decision has not been made. As we, as all of you are here and I'm sure there's a lot of emotion that's running through your hearts right now. This is a difficult subject and we fully understand that as we move forward. Part of the process includes town hall meetings and asking the question, what does the community think? Again, the final decision has not been made and part of that includes listening to the voices of the community. So we're glad that you're here today and we look forward to your comments, suggestions, and also questions. What you will see in the next few minutes is a pretty comprehensive presentation. And that presentation will hopefully answer a lot of the questions that you have. So I'm sure there are a bunch of questions specific to the recommendation that's been put forward. Also, the district has put together a frequently asked questions list that has about 28 questions. We recommend that you go through those questions and read those questions and also the answers to those questions. So with that, I'm going to turn the microphone back to the Superintendent to take you through the presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Taylor. So our goals and purpose for our town hall for tonight is to share the why behind why the district is considering consolidating a school, explain what factors were considered, sharing the process that was followed to come to the Superintendent's recommendation. And although our hope is also that your questions will all be answered in this presentation tonight and in the facts as well. But if there are still some questions needing to be answered or some suggestions or recommendations, there will be time at the end of the presentation provided for families and community to share those comments as well. In everything that we do, our work is in alignment with our board goals of people outcomes, conditions of learning, and both student and family engagement. This work is centered around the belief that every school and classroom is providing a supportive and inclusive culture for students and staff members and we value building that staff capacity at all levels of our organization. Since the beginning of this consolidation process, our Superintendent's Advisory Council were reminded to remember to keep a student-centric approach as we navigated these uncharted waters. We remain fully committed to this district vision that our Lennox students are on that flight path to success as we want every single one of our students to successfully transition to college or career once they leave our middle school doors to whichever high school they wish to attend. In our district's mission, we firmly declare that we know that our jobs are to educate our students and it begins when they enter our gates. We are dedicated to preparing them from birth to career via our preschool programs. We embrace the role of parents as partners in the educational process and we encourage our committed employees to support our students and families in all ways possible, not just academically. We are dedicated to preparing our students with 21st century skills so that they may successfully compete in our global society. So in our first slide, let us go ahead and begin. Why is Lennox considering consolidating a school? First, let me make sure that we are all on the same page. With the word "consolidating," it is another word that is used for closing. You will be hearing this word many times throughout this presentation tonight and I want to make sure that we are clear. The Lennox School District is facing a huge challenge and it is called declining enrollment. What is declining enrollment and why is it a huge challenge for us? It is a significant decrease in the number of students registered or enrolled at a school or district over a period of time. It can impact the school's budget and operations due to fewer students generating revenue. As you will see in the next couple of charts, it hasn't happened overnight and it is not just happening to Lennox. Since 2014, the Lennox School District has declined almost 1,200 students. It is projected that by '27-'28, we will have gone down to 3,456 students. If you focus on the pink bars, okay, these are our non-chartered schools, these are our students here. You will see that from 2014-15, okay, and 2016-17 here, you see that there was sort of a little jump. But all you see is a decline in students. Schools like LMS that at one point were close to... What was that the highest when you were there, Mrs. Pachardo?
900, or 1,500.
At 1,500 and currently you are?
1102.
1102. You have schools that at one point were at 800, are now at 700. Schools that were 500 that are now at 300, at 500. This decline here that you see, '27-'28, we will be a decrease of 32%. Every student generates funds for our district. With this continued decline, that means less students, less revenues for our district. If we do nothing, then what it means is less programs, less funding for our students. And it's going to continue. We are currently at 25-26, so we are 3,711 students. Like I said, this is forecasting and in the future slides, we'll show you a little bit more in terms of what other things that we're looking at for forecasting for the future years. Another data chart here that shows us when we look at our schools starting from 2011 to 2024, 25. So this is the end of this last year. It took a look at all of our schools. And what this chart shows us is at what point were they at the highest enrollment, and that is circled in yellow. And it also shows us what is the highest enrollment decline, meaning by how much percentage did they drop. Buford in 2011, 12, the school year, they were at 736 students. At the end of last year, they were 513 students. That is a drop of 30% of students from where they were back in 2011. Felton, at their highest point in 2016, were at 586 students. At the end of last school year, they were 364. That is a drop of 38%. Okay, so the decline is real, and it's going to continue. And in the next couple of slides, we're going to talk about why is this happening? Why are we declining enrollment? We contracted with the third party to see what are some factors out there that can give us some data. So some of the things that they take a look at, they look at historical data. They look at birth rates over the last five years. They look at mobility patterns within our district and our different area codes. They also look to see if there's any planned residential developments to see, you know, could it be that if they plan some developments, we will bring in some students? In 2025, currently, we have 2,819 students that belong to Lenox. Of those students, we also have 884 students that are in Lenox, but they live there out of district. So if we were to peel away students that are out of district, we would only have 2,819 students in Lenox. Okay, a scary thought to think about. So we have a total of 3,703 students. If we were to take away students that don't live in Lenox, we'd only have 2,819. It is forecasted by looking at all of these studies, birth rates, mobility, planned residential, by 2030, we'll only have 2,330 students that belong to Lenox. That's assuming we're still allowing 730 students from outside of the district, and we'll only have about 3,000 students total district-wide. Okay, and these are all forecasted numbers for our district. This is an outside party that comes and they do studies within the zip codes in our area. So you may be asking yourself, well, why is this happening to Lenox? And it's not just happening to Lenox. It's happening pretty much across California. I just read an article this morning. Two districts up north, one of them is closing two more schools, and another one is, they were voting to close another school because they don't have enough students, and they can't afford to pay their bills. But it is a phenomenon that's happening across California because of the following factors. The first one is demographics, lower birth rates. Many families are choosing not to have any more children because it's too expensive. The next one is the change in migration patterns. California used to be a great destination. People would want to come to California. It is no longer a great place to come because it's hard to find a job and because of the political climate that there is going on. Add to that the whole thing with the ICE raids. Many people do not want to come to California, causing obviously less students coming to our area. Economics is also a big factor contributing to declining enrollment with family income levels. It is very hard to raise a family on one income. It's very hard to raise a family with two incomes in some families. Housing affordability has become another deterrent for many of our families. It's really hard to afford rent, let alone purchase a home at this time. With the change in family structure, many of our children no longer come home to a mother and father family structure. It's now living with grandma or grandpa, or, you know, many families pulling their resources together to be able to afford living in a home now. There's a lot of economic uncertainty with the new, you know, government, you know, our new political party. There's a lot of economic uncertainty as well. Those economics have played a huge key role of why we are also seeing decline in enrollment. Since the pandemic, there is a lot of educational choice for our families. It used to be you went to the school that was in your neighborhood. That is no longer the choice. There's a lot of charter schools. There's a rise of private schools. Many parents have chosen to keep their kids home and they homeschool. There's also a lot of online learning options. So now parents have different options. They don't have to go to their community school. This has also taken away a lot of students that would have normally come to your school. Okay, and the last one is the perception of quality. Okay, when you have a lot of students that feel that, oh, you know, there's a negative perception of a school image. You see a lot of this also in schools like at LA Unified, if there's a safety image or a perception. Many schools, if they have low test scores, many parents won't send their children to that school if they don't have a certain program that the parents want. Ever since COVID, a lot of parents have chosen, you know, we don't want to send our children to school anymore. So all of these different factors have contributed to declining enrollment up and down the state. And what are their impacts? Well, these are the huge impacts that we are feeling here in Lenox. Reduced funding, difficulty maintaining programs and services, budget cuts affecting staffing, and for our teachers that are here and our staff that are here within the auditorium. We feel that when we staff every single year, if we don't have enough students, we have to cut programs. We have to staff a lot tighter. Difficulty maintaining facilities. If we have a school and we don't have enough teachers for that school, okay, it's not fiscally responsible to have a school where you have more than half of the classrooms empty. Academically, you're going to have smaller incoming classes. Before, it used to be you'd start a school year with four kindergarten classrooms, right, and those kindergarten classrooms would continue all the way to fifth grade. Now, if you're starting a school year or you start with only one or two kindergarten classrooms, by the time they get to fifth grade, you don't have many students. And that's what we're seeing. We're seeing smaller incoming classrooms or what we call cohorts, and increase in combination classrooms, which are not popular with teachers, are not popular with parents. But when you don't have enough students to make a full classroom, you have to make combination classes because they're, like I said, it's not fiscally possible to keep classrooms as smaller classes if you don't make combinations. Reduced course offerings. You see this a lot more at the middle school and at the high school level. You can't offer all the wonderful electives that you want to offer if you don't have the funding and the students to place in those classrooms. You run into equity concerns if only certain schools can offer some programs. And then you also have difficulty maintaining diverse student populations. When you start losing school students to charter schools, you find that those charter schools start taking all of your top students. So what do they do? They say, oh, well, we want all of your top students, and they leave you with a less diverse student population of students in your own district. The last area that it impacts is the community. Obviously, if you have less students, you're going to have less families, less school engagement. In some areas, you'll have difficulty attracting and retaining qualified teachers and support staff because they're going to fear the turnover. If, you know, if you have less classes, teachers are going to fear that they may lose their jobs in the following years, or there won't be enough funds for them to be able to have maybe raises in the coming years. And then, the last one there is the potential school closures or restructuring. If you see, those with the red check marks are those areas that we see impacting us here in Lenox. We see the reduced funding already because we're seeing less students. We see budget cuts already affecting our staffing. We've done that already in certain programs where if a position is closed, we've chosen not to refill that. In some of our facilities, we've already taken a look to see how might we be able to address them because, like I said, the state does not give us money for facilities. If you have to approve them, you have to use general funds. And general funds, like I said, you have to be very tight with those funds. Smaller incoming classes, it's very hard when you have a school that at one time had four kindergarten classrooms, and now you're down to two, or maybe even one, and you're trying to compete with other districts around you. You know, the potential for school closures or restructuring. You know, people say like, well, if you close a school, does that fix your problem? No. You know, I wish you could say, close your school, it fixes everything. It's one, it's one part of the implementation. We've begun addressing the fiscal problem for two and a half years now. It's going to help, but it's not going to be the sole solution. We have to do other things in combination with that piece. But leaving it alone and not addressing it, it's going to put us in a bigger hole, you know, if we don't address that problem. Okay, so what factors did we consider when we started talking about consolidating a school? The most frequent question that I've been asked about that is, what did the district do to really consider consolidating the school? There's many factors that are considered because every school district is very unique in how it addresses its structural deficit challenges. But here are the most common factors, along with the ones that the Lenox Superintendent's Advisory Council used to narrow down its recommendations. There's three basic areas. The first one are the financial considerations. Obviously, what are the cost savings? What are the operational costs of the school site? And what will be the transition cost once that school is closed? The second one is, are there student and academic factors? So you take a look at enrollment and capacity. You take a look at program opportunities. If one of the schools offers certain programs, you take a look at student achievement at the school site as well as the impact on students. The third one is the logistical and the community factors. If transportation is involved, the condition of the facilities, the impact on the community, if there's any access to equity programs or equitable programs, and then the staff and the boundaries. Because in this situation, you're going from the possibility of five elementary schools to four elementary schools. It will change the boundaries, so that will impact the community as well. So looking at all of those factors, the council or the Superintendent's Advisory Committee factored it down to these. And these are the factors that were used when the committee started looking at the different scenarios. What would be the best recommendation for students? The potential cost savings? The least disruption to the district? The travel distance between the schools? The mitigation of traffic congestion? Transportation needs? The special education continuum of services? Because one of the sites that we were looking at, obviously, does house our large population of SDC programs and the facility modification requirements for receiving schools of distributed students. So all of these things, our SAC was asked to consider when looking at the scenarios. So as I shared in the previous slides, declining enrollment is impacting our district financially, academically, and obviously on our community. When we initiated the first conversations with the board, we talked about a possible school consolidation and restructuring during a special board meeting. And this was back in January in 2025. We began our discussion with MGT. We established our Superintendent's Advisory Council in April, and the work began from April all the way to September the 2nd with our advisory council. They met, they evaluated data, they were able to look at a couple of scenarios. And by September the 2nd, they were able to submit a ballot and provide the superintendent with the recommendation on the school consolidation or school restructuring. Back in January, along with other actions that were implemented to address the deficit spending. Because as I said before, closing one school does not solve the problem. It will though with the implementation of other fiscal stabilization actions that will be in alignment with the school consolidation. The timeline does capture the work that was done and the guidance of MGT Consulting to help us primarily focus on identifying student-centered strategies for managing and operating our facilities amid significant enrollment declines. Our Superintendent's Advisory Council was made up of several members from throughout our district. It was classified, utificated, administrators, parents, community members. And we met, I want to say about eight, and we had eight different meetings from April all the way to September 2nd. Their role was to serve as an advisory role to the superintendent via this council. And at the end of the day, their job was to provide a recommendation to the superintendent. The SAC selected recommendation number two, which would require the superintendent to make a decision on whether to select Felton into Buford or Buford into Felton, with the clear understanding that our special education students would be distributed to create a modern and more inclusive model, thank you, for students and not the current centralized model that is not considered a best practice for children with special needs. Through a collaborative process, the SAC committee moved forward knowing that at the end of the day, the superintendent would be selecting one of the two schools to close for the 26, 27 school year. In this process, we did examine the pros and the cons from implementing this recommendation, along with the possible cost savings that could be generated. If you look here on the slide, the pros would be generating cost savings, increased enrollment at whichever receiving school, that the vacant school site could be used for another educational purpose, or it could be deemed surplus property to generate revenue, that SDC would no longer be centralized, the less disruption for general ed students by moving either the students to one of the schools, and that the small community culture would remain because you'd be allowing the entire school body along with their teachers to move into one of the schools that would be selected. Now, the cons would be obviously, it'd be reduction in management and classified personnel. It would change the LMS perception because one of the things that we had talked about would be, could we help the situation with the amount of students that we lose, the outgoing fifth grade students that we lose to the charter middle schools? We talked about the SDC transition, okay, because we know that's going to be difficult for our students and our parents to accept that our students are going to be going to a different school. We talked about transportation, potential site modifications for the receiving schools. And then, parents have no choice because they either have to go to Felton or they'd have to go to Buford. Okay, the potential cost savings in doing this? Anywhere from 600,000 to 900,000. As you can see from the previous slide, it would have been easier had the SAC committee just given me a clear decision on which school site to close. And then, I could have either agreed or disagreed with the recommendation. But however, this was not the case. I was given information and factors to consider prior to making my choice, to make my recommendation to the Board of Education, and then I would have to share it with the Lenox community through these town halls. So at the end of the day, I did have to make a decision. I would either be standing here in front of you sharing whether it would be Buford or Felton. And at the end of the day, after looking at all the information in a logical way and looking at all the data and the evidence, I did present this looking at all the data and the evidence, I did present this to the SAC committee. And I shared with them my recommendation to the board. That on December the 16th, I would tell the board that my recommendation would be to close Felton Elementary School at the end of this school year. And that we would make a deep commitment to the students and the staff to make it a thoughtful and inclusive transition. That all of their general ed students who attend Felton would be warmly welcomed to Beaufort Elementary Schools, along with their teachers. That we would join both communities together and that our goal would be to maintain those strong relationships, to build a strong sense of continuity for students and families with their input, of course. And that our special education services would be offered throughout the district using a continuum of services, moving away from our centralized model to one that better meets the individual needs of students in inclusive settings. We also recognize the importance of parent choice. Lenox families will have the opportunity to apply for the other elementary schools if there is space available, should their child have been moved to a different school site. Please note that this decision was done after a lot of thoughtful review of data and logical evidence for what is truly the best for our students and staff and what will have the least impact to implement. My recommendation to the board is done with a true deep commitment to our Felton students, staff, and families. And we will all do what's best in our power to make this a smooth transition for all who are involved. Our cabinet, our principals, our directors, we all know that this is going to be a team effort to do so if our board chooses to go ahead and move forward with this change. One of the key questions that I've been asked, well, what criteria did you use? You know, Beaufort, Felton, what made you choose one of the schools over the other? There were six factors that I used to consider in my decision to make this my recommendation. These key, these six factors were school enrollment projections, the cost per pupil, operational cost, the physical condition of the school site, what would be the least amount of disruption for relocating the students and the staff and the programs, the enhanced classroom impact, and then addressing the current special education model at Felton. So let's go ahead and review those factors. The first one is school enrollment projections. So in the previous slides, we shared how declining enrollment has impacted our Lenox school district. Here is another way for you to visualize it by the area map. If you look at our entire district, you can see that on the west end of our school district, right, all of our elementary schools feed into Lenox Middle School. But even Lenox Middle School itself is seeing a decline, okay? And that is because of the area of itself and all the California were seeing a decline in students. But when you look at these two schools, for those of you that have been here a long time, you do know that at one point Felton was an intermediate school. It was never meant to be an elementary school. Had it remained an intermediate school, I don't think we would be seeing the situation that we are in. It's an elementary school and its proximity to Beaufort, right, puts it in the situation where you have two competing elementary schools. Both of these schools are within blocks to one another. And you see that Felton is 37% decrease, where Beaufort is 30% decrease. Like I said, proximity to one another, very close to one another. It's logical when you look at these both schools, which of the schools has the least enrollment? Here is our most current data when we look at student enrollment. Okay, Beaufort is currently 464, Felton 355, Huerta 518, Jefferson 704, LMS 1103, and Moffett 556. Okay, once again, if we're looking at current enrollment, we're looking at what is the logical number in terms of what is going to be the least disruptive, only looking at numbers? It makes sense that having the least amount of students will be the least disruptive to move to a different campus. Based on a demographic study completed by our third party, by 2030, there will be only 280 students with the forecasted capacity of 48%, meaning that more than half of Felton's classrooms will be unoccupied by 2030. It is wonderful to believe that in a couple of years, we may get, we may get, but like I said, the forecast, the demographic projections, they all point numbers will continue to decrease. It doesn't make sense for us to continue to have a campus open that's going to continue to decrease and the revenue will not come in. And when we look at the cost per site, you're going to see that if you can't pay for your expenditures, it does not make sense to continue to have a site open. So when we look at the next factor, which is the operations cost, and this is per pupil, every year that we have a school open, we look at the decline in student enrollment. For every student. Every year that we decline in student enrollment, we will generate less revenue. At the top line, you see the green arrow. Okay, so if we look since starting back in 2021, all the way to a projected 28, 29. So this is our student enrollment, right? And you see that every year there's been a decrease. Every year per student funding, we get a total. Obviously, if you do the math, you multiply your enrollment, your student funding, it gives you your total LCFF. So it tells you what you're going to generate, your revenue. You may be thinking, well, you're going to make more money. They're giving you more money for student funding. Not if you're getting less students. You start seeing, okay, here we're still positive, but we're making less, we're actually going to be earning less because we have less students. Here now, we're now in the negative because we have less students. As you start moving into the outer years, we're in the negative because we have less students. And this is going to, this will be the continued pattern. The less students you have, the less money you'll be generating in revenues. And this will continue to happen with declining enrollment. When you compare both schools and you take a look at their student count? We can see that how much revenue each school brings in based on enrollment. So we can, we compare both and we take a look at Beaufort. Based on their student enrollment, the revenue they bring in is like 4.4 million. When you look at their expenditures, about 4.5. So the difference there is $130,000. When you look at Felton, the revenue that they bring in based on their student enrollment is about 3 million. Their expenditures is 4.4 million. So, right, they're negative 1.2 million because they don't bring in enough revenue to cover their own expenditures. Once again, like I said, the math doesn't work out. You need to be able to bring in enough money to cover your expenditures. Like I said, you have to be logical when you're thinking about covering at least your expenditures as a school site. The next factor considered was the physical condition of each school site. In October of 2022, our district contracted with PBK to complete a facilities needs assessment. Every school was looked at carefully and they looked at four different areas. Site utility replacement, fire light safety, accessibility improvements. They looked at classroom upgrades, including technology. It looked at school enhancement and upgrades to paving and exterior play areas and playgrounds. And when the comparison or the, when the facility needs was done, we found that both Beaufort and Felton would be actually quite comparable to one another at the end of the needs assessments. However, over the last two years, a lot more upgrades have been made to the school sites, specifically Beaufort in regards to safety, including the installation of the electrical gate as well as the perimeter wrought iron fencing around the school. In the next slide though, I want to break down and show you what are the pros and the cons based on the needs assessment. Okay, so here we have Felton School. As a former intermediate school site, Felton does have a larger square footage by 10,000 square feet. Okay, so the pros, obviously, it is a larger space. It has more classrooms. Okay, the cons are that it does have less parking to accommodate increased staff. And it will have more cost of repair needs. And that is indicated by this chart on this side here. So here is the actual map of the school site. This one here breaks it down in the legend of what are the conditions of the current buildings. And if you see here, the buildings that are in red, these are buildings that are in very poor conditions based on the needs assessment. So these are buildings that would have to be addressed. Like I said, more cost of repair needed before the other school sites would be able to be able to move in. When we look at Beaufort? While Beaufort objectively has a smaller square footage, the site actually is more accommodating for this increase in students and staff. The pros, it's less costly to repair. When you look at this map, there are less buildings in red, in poor condition. There's adequate parking to meet the needs of extra staff. And this is because of its proximity to LMS. And also, there is an additional parking at the preschool area across the street that can accommodate more parking. And as I mentioned before, there's less buildings in poor condition. The cons, obviously, it's smaller overall square footage than Felton and obviously the potential for traffic, more traffic in the mornings or the afternoons if you don't adjust the start and the ending times. With both schools, we have done walkthroughs and we do know that, you know, before when we were deciding whether it would be Beufort or Felton, both schools would be able to accommodate the changes. So we have enough classrooms for both schools. Okay, the next factor would be the least disruption to the site overall and enhancement to the classroom impact. So a very important and logical factor that I have to take into consideration was the amount of disruption each school would cause to close and unify versus the other. Using only data, the evidence shows that Felton has the lower enrollment number, so a smaller population would be easier to move. There's also fewer staff at Felton, meaning less staff assignment changes that will also be required district-wide. We have a wonderful opportunity to move away from an antiquated centralized special education model that is not what's best for our students. Our students need the opportunity for inclusivity and a possibility for being at their home school if possible. And we must and will do better for our students who have IEPs. And this will be possible if we can relocate our problems, our programs, allowing more students across the district. The next piece is enhanced classroom impact. By unifying both of our elementary schools, there'll be more teacher per grade level, thus creating increased opportunities to create and collaborate and share best instructional and behavioral practices. Currently, at some of our school sites, we only have one or two teachers. By unifying our school sites, we have now possibility of four or five. This will create increased opportunities to collaborate, leading to stronger instructional practices. With a decentralized special education model, we'll now have more special education and gen ed teachers on the same campuses, promoting shared strategies, sharing professional learning and inclusive practices benefiting all students. And lastly, we have integrating SDC programs across the schools. And this not only encourages acceptance, understanding, and inclusion among all students, not only with our staff as well as our administrators. Okay, and when we do address our special education model at Felton, I'd like for us to understand that this is an important piece as we move forward to creating an accepting and inclusive district-wide. When a school consolidation takes place, the school district must ensure that it's carefully examining its special education program needs. In our situation, we are examining a continuation, excuse me, a continuum of educational services. For example, as we see the arrows below, we'd like to go ahead and envision that in our models, just like we see here with our TK2, if we are looking at a mild mod SDC model, we want to envision a continuum of services where not only were students who are served in a mild mod SDC program, where there is a mild mod program that not only serves their needs there, and then there's a continuum of services when they move into third through fifth, as well as when they transition to sixth through eighth. We want to create that same continuum of services for those who are mod severe as well throughout our district. We know that placement for them is not a location of services. We know that the number of hours for them is not going to be what just that the student is going to receive. We want to really make sure that it is going to be a great environment and it's going to be classified by a level of restrictiveness. And we are going to be working very closely with our new director of special ed, as well as our assistant soup of instruction, to make sure that we can provide this throughout our district. I know we already have some preliminary models already looking at that piece as well. So if and when this change takes place, we can do that in an effective manner. And what does this mean for our Felton special education program? Well, I want to first and foremost clarify that our Felton special education classes and services are not going to go away. And there was this rumor out there or misinformation that students were going to lose their services, and this is completely not true. Instead, our SDC programs will be moving to other district schools. They're going to keep their same IEP services, supports, and staff, and there will be no reduction in services or access. Okay, I want to also address some comments that I heard from some of our special education parents, because many were under the impression that the consolidation of schools meant that it would negatively impact their child's IEP services. So here are some of the common misunderstandings that I heard at the board meeting the other night. If Felton closes, will special ed services be eliminated? And that's not true. All SDC programs and services will continue at new school sites? Will their child's IEP change? No, IEPs remain legally binding and unchanged by a school relocation? Will students lose their teachers and aides? And our goal is to maintain continuity of staff wherever possible. We have to remember, like I said, teachers choose, you know, they can choose to remain at the campus. I said, many times we lose teachers over turnover because they choose to leave. Like I said, but we hope to maintain all of our teachers for this next school year. Will general ed teachers be prepared to receive them? I said, our staff training and resources will ensure that we have inclusive supportive environments. I know our new director has already talked about providing a new training for the new receiving sites so that they're ready to receive not only our students, but as well as our families for the incoming school year, should this be taking place? I want to stress to all of our families, but especially our special education families, that our commitment to you throughout the transition will be that there will be no loss of services or support, that there will be ongoing communication throughout the process, there will be transition planning for students and staff to ensure smooth moves. There will be additional parent meetings and input opportunities before any changes are finalized, because we do know that there will be extra steps and extra reassurances needed for our special ed families. And this is our pledge. special ed families, and this is our pledge to you, um, should that decision take place. To our employees, who may be wondering how this school consolidation is going to impact them, I do want to start by saying that while these personnel processes are technical, they are just not technical because they involve real people, colleagues, and families, and our goal is to move through this with fairness, transparency, and care. Our staffing impact will be carefully managed. Okay, our school closure may result in reductions in certain positions, but the district will first analyze all current and anticipated vacancies. It'll take a look at retirements, resignations, open positions, um, and review all opportunities for reassignment before we have to even start looking at layoffs. For our special education staff, okay, they will remain essential. So we want to make sure that our teachers, our para-eds, our RBTs, that they will remain needed to support our IEPs. Some staff may be reassigned to schools based on program, but positions are expected to remain stable to support our students. And through this all, we want to make sure that we maintain open communication with our groups and our labor partners, because we do know that this will have to be a collaborative process. Um, we're going to make sure that every effort's made to ensure that they're treated with respect, support, and fully inform them, um, everything that we know during the process. Now, I know it's hard to say this when we have people asking us questions now. It's really important that you understand that this communication will take place as soon as the board makes a decision. We can't make any communication or give any pending or any potential information prior to, we would be breaking protocol. But as soon as we do know, like I said, we'll be able to share those plans once the board gives us approval. Um, but all we can say is, like I said, we are dedicated to make, to carry all of this and make it, to be making sure that we're serving our students, and making sure that we're handling all of our changes with compassion and care, um, and know that throughout this process, our team of cabinet will be here to support you in this process. Okay, we understand that communication will be key bringing forth any type of change, and we want to pledge to our community that in a timely manner, we're going to be giving you all the information with changes, with dates, important meetings that have been scheduled. We're going to continue updating our website, giving all the information to our community, um, correcting any misinformation that may be out there, and I do encourage you all to fact-check your information, so we're going to be updating our FAQs as much as possible, um, because, you know, we want to make sure that when you receive something, it is the truth, and it's not just someone out there putting out their opinion, so please, please make sure that you're fact-checking the information that you have. Um, tonight, when we receive your suggestions and your questions, we want to add those to our FAQs too, so that that number of questions increases, and like I said, the more informed we are, the better we'll be together. Because if approved, we want to ensure a seamless transition. Um, this last week, we met with principals, and we talked about how might we make this better for our students? And they already started talking about some great ideas. They talked about having welcoming events for our families, for our students, school tours, counseling support, not only for students, but for staff, principal meeting greets, farewell, closure opportunities, and of course, giving a lot of opportunity for our families, those of you sitting here, to give suggestions. How might we make this a more soothing or a smoother transition for our students? Because we want to make this collaborative, and obviously, we want to talk to the students. Um, early this morning, I was at Buford, and some of the people suggested starting like pen pals, or emailing students, or having Felton students come over and visit the Buford staff, um, to begin that process already for students to start feeling comfortable. I know both Ms. Martinez and Ms. Delatorre have already, you know, made their pledges of whatever they can do to make families and make students feel welcome, um, they're going to do their part to do that piece as well. Um, and like I said, it's going to be truly a group effort for all of us to be able to make this be a smooth transition for our students. And in terms of next steps, tonight, we're here for our town halls. At the end of both town halls, I will be gathering all the information, all of the feedback that you are providing, all the questions, all of the suggestions. With this information, on November the 7th, I will be presenting this to our Board of Education, along with my recommendations for them. On December the 16th, it is when this will be a board action item, and the Board of Education will make their final determination whether they will consolidate Felton School or not, should it go through. Then, on the first day, December 17th, is when the executive cabinet can begin to ensure that all the departments will begin all of their duties to ensure that we are ready for day one of 2627 school year to welcome our Felton community to Buford School. With that, I've given you a lot of information this evening. I hope that you're going to leave tonight with a better understanding of why we're considering the consolidation of a school, and how we came to the decision for Felton School. But I want to reinforce once again that our schools were built to serve a much larger population, over 4,000 students just three years ago, now under 3,700 and falling. By 2035, we will have the capacity for nearly twice as many students that we will actually serve, leaving a lot of our campuses underutilized. A lot of our half-empty schools will be limited resources from class instruction and student support. If we consolidate now, it'll allow our district to preserve programs and staffing by reducing overhead, it'll stabilize our budget in the face of declining enrollment, to plan strategically for long-term operations aligned with future enrollment. This decision is not just about numbers, it's about ensuring that every Lennox student continues to learn in a vibrant, well-resourced school community. So now that you've heard this information, I do now want to provide an opportunity for you, the community and staff members, to ask questions or provide suggestions regarding the possible school consolidation. Mr. Taylor will be here to provide guidelines to ensure that we have a smooth and respectful process, and Principal Pichardo from LMS will be here assisting us tonight at the podium with our speakers as well.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen, for your patience. I know you just received a lot of information, but this is the part where we want to hear from you. We want to hear your voices, we want to hear your comments, we want to hear your suggestions. And so we've allotted some time for you to do that. And again, this is part of the process of letting the community, letting those voices be heard. So we have Ms. Crystal Lopez. If you are interested and want to make a comment or have a suggestion, please fill out one of the cards. In that card, please provide your name and also your association with the district, i.e. are you a parent, are you a teacher, are you a community member? We will allow you 90 seconds. Again, we want to be respectful of people's time, and then also, we want to make sure we're not here until midnight. And so 90 seconds for you to either make a comment or ask a question. We will do our best to answer that question, but I, it almost seems like based on the presentation, a lot of your questions probably have been answered. Lastly, and also very importantly, we ask you that you be respectful in your comments, and that you keep it professional. So with that, we've got staff going around and passing out the cards. Also, just one, if a question has already been asked, we ask that you not ask the same question again, and I know by the looks of it, we're going to have a number of comment cards. Also, again, if there is a question, we will do our, and it's not part of the frequently asked questions, we will try to answer it tonight. Or if the question is already on the frequently asked questions list, we will just refer you to the, to the frequently asked questions list.
Okay. La primera persona que vamos a llamar, Ana Reyes. Ana Reyes.
Oh, maybe Aura, maybe Aura.
Okay, ahora la respuesta para las preguntas.
Eh, eh, la persona que quiere pertenecer.
Y si para que sepan si vamos a tener el tiempo.
Para empezar, me gustaría saber, ah, sorry, Aura Reyes, y buenas tardes a todos o buenas noches. Ah, me gustaría saber por qué eligieron esta escuela para hacer la actitud hoy cuando nuestros hijos son los afectados en FEL. Tira la respuesta pronto porque tendremos que la bajar.
Se hizo aquí porque sabíamos que el personal desde el sitio también posiblemente quisiera venir aquí, y este lugar era más fácil para poder ver que el lugar de bolsa bien.
Bueno, pero pues, la escuela está bastante grande con una cafetería muy cómoda allá y pudimos haberla hecho allá, ya que los afectados somos allá. Ah, la siguiente es, si eso llegara a pasar, so, ya está preparado el equipo porque usted habló de que al regresar en diciembre nuestros hijos ya están en nuestra escuela o van a llevar a otra escuela. So, ya está preparado el lugar para que van a ir nuestros hijos de expresión especial y los otros niños, ya está el equipo, el personal todo listo para ellos?
No va a estar eso en diciembre, va a estar eso para agosto.
Para agosto de este año.
De 2026.
O tienen un año para prepararlo.
Seis, poquito más de siete meses.
Ah, para poderlo visitar y ver que si eso llega a pasar, si está bien y cómodo para nuestros hijos dignos de una habitación para, ya que son, pues los que van a representar el futuro y queremos unos niños bien acercados.
Joanna Cardenas.
Hi, good afternoon. Um, so my question.
You closed it, so.
You closed it? Okay. So my question is, um, I heard that you guys are going to make it easier for general students to be able to transition as far as doing events or welcome, but what about the special education students? How are they able to adjust to going from one school, completely different than going to Buford, but how can you guys help my child understand that it's a completely different setting? My child is very fixed on routine, so how would you guys help my child understand?
Well, in terms of, sorry, and I hope that you didn't come across that we're already going to help general ed students. Obviously, with our special ed students, when you meet with your, you know, with your case manager, we're going to talk about, okay, what are some ways that we can go ahead and help with the transition plan? Because obviously, it's going to talk about prior to, right? You're going to have to, um, go and take a look at the classroom, right? Expose them to the classroom prior to, so it's going to be, um, meeting the teacher beforehand, looking at the classroom beforehand, um, a lot, you know, some social stories, getting them to, you know, to transition to that piece before. So there have to be a lot of planning beforehand, just like when they're going to go to a new school site, right? When they transition to a new school, like if they're going from fifth grade to sixth grade, right? You'd have pre-planning meetings, it would be the same thing. We'd have the pre-planning meetings to talk about what is going to make us help to transition that, because it's not just that morning piece, right? It's going to talk about at home, what are we going to do? What are we going to do in the morning for them to feel comfortable? So there'll be a lot of conversations with the whole IEP team, um, so that the parents feel comfortable, but that the staff feels comfortable too.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, next we'll have Alejandro, or Alejandra, maybe Guzman?
Alejandro.
Mi pregunta es, ¿han llegado a pensar en el impacto que van a llevar todos nuestros niños especiales? Porque están diciendo va a haber aulas, va a haber maestros, va a haber todo, pero alguien ha llegado a pensar en el impacto que van a llevar tan solo mi hija, que solamente quiere pasar por la oficina. El día que me la abren otro portón, se le acaba su día. ¿Han llegado a pensar en eso? En ese impacto que van a llevar nuestros niños? Si a un niño neurotípico le cuesta, a un niño especial, es, es, terminan con su mundo. Van a tardar. No digo que no se van a complacer, pero van a tardar. Mi pregunta es, ¿han llegado a pensar en el impacto de nuestros niños y en nosotros? Porque mi vida es mi hija. Ahorita, si mi tiempo fuera otro, ahorita mis hijas ya están grandes y estuvieron siempre en Felton, pero ahorita tengo una niña de siete años en educación especial autista, que su mundo se acaba si algo le cambia uno de rutina de todo. ¿Han llegado a pensar en esto? Porque aquí no estamos pensando en nuestros niños especiales, estoy hablando por la mía. ¿Han llegado a pensar en esto? ¿Han llegado a pensar en esto? Y le pueden asegurar.
Le pueden asegurar señora que cuando, si es que esto ocurre, vamos a estar trabajando todos como un equipo para asegurar que hay suficiente apoyo para los padres igual que los niños, para asegurar que hay una transición, porque sé que va a ser un cambio grande, pero, pero va a haber recursos para ayudar a los estudiantes y vaya a los padres para este cambio.
¿Puedo responder? ¿Puedo responder o ya no? Okay.
Por qué no, por qué no el cambio de, de esta escuela a la otra? Allá son niños especiales, es, no es, no es mejor que los niños neurotípicos se acostumbren en la escuela Feltan que traernos todos a los niños especiales.
Es, es difícil poder compartir, pero sé que como los padres por tanto tiempo, verdad, es el único modelo que han estado fomentado, verdad? Pero en los estudios los enseñan y también el estado los han dicho, el condado los ha dicho. El modelo que está ahorita no es el modelo que debemos estar siguiendo, verdad? Es suficientes estudiantes, es demasiado clases para una escuela. Los estudiantes deben de estar con diferentes estudiantes en otras escuelas, verdad? Y es otro modelo que tenemos que nosotros poder implementar y hacerlo escrito. Y sé que es difícil como papá, como mamá escuchar eso, verdad? Pero tienen que poder darnos esa oportunidad para que los estudiantes puedan tener ellos otras experiencias con otras escuelas, otros estudiantes, verdad? Y vamos a, a verdad, administrar todos nuestros recursos para que ellos tengan esas experiencias en otras escuelas. Pero sus salones, sus maestros, todos esos ellos van a tener en su nueva escuela.
Lo soy de acuerdo. Marica Mendoza.
Uh, my name is Marica Mendoza, my daughter was two thousand. My question to you is, what is, what support you gonna provide mentally for my daughter? She suffers from anxiety moving from school. Also, traffic, I do do drop off to three different schools. Are you gonna change the bell ring for Beaufort? Since it seems like that's the school you guys are choosing for the kids to be changed to.
So one of the things that we've already done is we've reached out to the LA County Office of Education to provide us with some support, not only for our staff, but as well for our students. So we're gonna be providing a lot of social-emotional support for our students, working with all of our counselors at our school sites, ensuring that they meet with every single one of our students as the transition begins, so that our students not only have a voice to share with in terms of how they're feeling, making sure that we're having morning meetings with our students until that they feel that they're comfortable as we make that transition. Because, right, a big part of that is their expression, making sure that they're feeling comfortable in their new environment. Um, and that's that whole mental, that mo- that social-emotional piece. Um, for students that need additional support, obviously, we have counselors on site if they need additional support. We also have outside agencies that can support with that piece. Um, in terms of traffic, um, the good thing is we do have a great relationship with our, our middle school principal. We can take a look at, um, starting times, ending times, making sure that they don't coincide, so we can work to see how we might adjust those starting and ending times so that we can ease off that traffic time. Because I think when they're so close to each other, is when that starting time and that drop off time, it gets a little tricky. Um, also, we wanna take a look at the possibility of maybe where those gates are as well. There's a possibility of getting creative, um, the entrance gate for parents too, that might help with the traffic congestion in the morning, because.
Thank you. I do have another question. Um, I'm sure you have parents.
Yes.
Do you have a special needs child?
He was when he was a third grader, he's a, he's a grown boy now, but he was.
I, my son is too, my middle one. He did not cope well with changes. You say that they have to integrate to different classes and to different people? My doctor does not agree with that. Are you ready, are the staff ready for the tantrums? For everything that they're gonna go through at the beginning of the year? It's gonna take a while for them. Are you guys ready for that? Because it doesn't sound like you guys want. You guys are saying Felton is the one that's gonna be closed. The parents were not notified when you guys decided that, when you guys decided to review it. Why? Your child's not the one affected, these are kids. We could choose where you are. Thank you.
Just a reminder, ninety seconds please on your comments slash questions. We wanna make sure everybody has an opportunity to ask for me to handle it.
Okay, Jorge Negrete.
When they ask me the questions, that takes time, so it's more of my time.
Martín Pintos.
Hola, buenas noches a todos, muchas gracias por el tiempo, señora Tavéz, es un gusto. Muy bonita la presentación, muchas preguntas se respondieron. Me quedó una pregunta sin responder, ah, no vi que estuvieran hablando de la fase. Eh, tengo entendido que en este momento estamos en la etapa cinco de la fase número dos, que son los tomares. Ah, nomás queda la parte número seis de la fase dos, y vendríamos pasando a lo que sería la fase tres, que es cuando ya la escuela se cierra, si es que llegamos a ir, verdad? El otro día en el cafecito yo le hice una pregunta, ah, que me interesa mucho, es, ¿qué va a pasar con el campo? Ah, no sé si usted recuerda que me contestó de que no se va a vender, porque no se va a poder recuperar el edificio. Aparentemente, en la página de, de Feltan, en la página oficial del distrito, perdón, aparece que al final de la parte tres toma la decisión si lo van a vender o lo van a cerrar. O eso no está concordando con lo que hablamos en el acercamiento en el cafecito. Eso es una parte, y la otra parte que me interesa es saber si el problema es el, el decline de inscripciones, cada vez hay menos inscripciones en el distrito, y las estadísticas dicen que cada vez va a haber menos estudiantes. ¿Cuál va a ser la siguiente? ¿Pueden cerrar? Muchas gracias.
No sé después de qué, de qué página oficial, porque eso de, de, de que la escuela esté de venta, ¿me lo está diciendo?
Si me lo va a cerrar, se lo vuelvo.
Sí, porque, para, ninguna escuela está de venta y para que eso se sucediera, tuviera que ser público y tuviera que estar en el periódico, así que si algo está allí, es falso.
Tal vez me mal ofrecer, no que la escuela esté de venta, sino de que hay una posibilidad al final de la fase tres de que la escuela se puede vender o se puede derretir.
Eh, eso es un, puede ser, si, si la mesa directiva decidiere que eso es una posibilidad, pero yo le puedo decir que nuestra mesa directiva es en contra de que se venga, porque ya si se venden a propiedad, no se va, no se va a comprar a nadie.
¿Pueden hacer clic? Esto es de la parte dos.
Sí, ah.
Y esto se pide la parte tres, es con números impuestos.
Sí, oh, sí, oh, sí, oh, sí, ya, move your next. El parte, ustedes pueden analizar eso.
Muchísimas gracias, conoció como buena mujer.
Patricia, 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 Arten, Seria, Martínez, Corazon, Aquimio, no? Ah, no dice Patricia, ¿qué dice?
Buenas noches. Yo estoy aquí porque quiero que me den información acerca de ustedes hijos, que desde enero ya se estaba hablando de esto, y en abril ya sabían lo que tenían que hacer. Nosotros se nos acabó de informar apenas, ¿hace cuánto tiempo? Un mes. ¿Por qué nos dejaron hasta el final cuando los acortados somos mejor? Yo les pido a ninguno de ustedes, no sé quiénes son, nunca los he mirado en la escuela ni en las reuniones, me los piden, si los voy a ir a la casa. Yo les pido a ustedes que lo quieren. De verdad, se los pido, ¿quiénes son ustedes?
Pues nosotros.
Yo representan, porque nosotros no sabemos, no los conocemos.
Si, si, si han ido a, a nuestros cafecitos, hemos, los hemos entrevistado nosotros, verdad? No sé si es.
Con todo mi respeto, solo las conozco ustedes. He ido a todos los cafecitos, todos somos seguidoras de la escuela. La directora está presente al inside, que nunca faltamos a ninguna reunión, a ningún cafecito, a ningún evento de la escuela.
Posiblemente me, me perdió, porque el último cafecito estaba, estaba ahí.
No, ustedes está ahí, a usted sí, todos, ustedes sí, a los demás. A la mesa directiva nunca la hemos visto, la acabo de conocer la semana que pasada.
Pero, pero ya que me contaron su pregunta señora, porque dice que cuando nosotros comenzamos a tener estas, estas pláticas, así que mi trabajo de superintendente es cuando veo que hay un posible meter, verdad, algo sobre, sobre el presupuesto, verdad? Es mi trabajo de decirle a la mesa directiva que hay posiblemente este cambio, hay, hay que ser este cambio en el futuro. Así que es por eso que yo le di este estudio a la mesa directiva en enero, verdad? Y entonces ellos dijeron, okay, hay que estudiarlo, hay que ver qué más información puede ver. Es por eso que contratamos con la compañía para ver qué se puede hacer. Cuando se va a hablar de posiblemente cerrar una escuela, no podemos decir, ay, aquí cerramos. Se tiene que ser un proceso, se tiene que ser, se tiene que establecer un consilio, y es lo que fue lo que hicimos, establecimos un consilio de diferentes miembros, ese grupo se, se reinó, y ese, ese consilio cuando se hizo en abril, toda esa información, cada junta, cada agenda, todos los minutos, todo esto era público. Cada junta que teníamos cada mes, se, se establecía y se puso público todos los minutos. Así que si uno de padres nunca se dio cuenta, verdad, fue por, no, no darse cuenta, pero eso de serse público, se hizo público.
Perdón, pero uno como padre está esperando que la mesa directiva, el distrito quien sea le informe a uno de algo tan importante como esto, uno como, va a saber qué está ocurriendo esto. Y ustedes que vienen a verse de encima a los otros y comunicarnos, está sucediendo esto con su escuela. A nosotros no se nos comunicó nada, la directa nunca nos comunicó nada. O sea, no nos están tomando en cuenta.
Si se me llega la carta, señora.
Yo no recibí nada, los papás no recibieron nada. No se ven, quiero que me muestren la carta que mandaron porque no recibimos nada.
Cuando visitan, cuando se formó el consilio, se mandó una carta, recibiendo quién estuviera interesado en ser parte del consilio.
No, yo no recibí nada.
Se mandó, was it in March that it was sent out? In March. En marzo se mandó una carta a las familias diciendo quién estaba interesado en ser parte del consilio.
Okay, pero eso es una cosa, pero quién informó de lo que estaba sucediendo? ¿En qué momento ustedes tomaron una carta y dijeron desde enero hasta abril está ocurriendo esto? Padres, pónganse las pilas o busquen ayuda, usted también como superintendente.
En cada, en cada, en cada mesa directiva daba yo un reporte. Cada mes, la mesa directiva yo daba un reporte.
Okay, pero estoy como superintendente, debí haber hecho más con esta escuela.
Good evening, parents, good evening, district personnel. I just wanna share the highlights of what happened in Hawaii Medical School especially. A lot of our students come to Felton Elementary knowing that they're gonna have an opportunity to be safe, taken care of, and they're gonna be having an opportunity to actually integrate into general education. Felton Elementary never has told another student, "You can't be here because you're unique", or had an exceptional, a lot of our parents were told that by the other school sites, not because they were not rough. They were told because the unique and special programs that they needed were at Felton. My suggestion is to continue to service the students at Felton Elementary and to allow the other schools to have their own special ed classes to grow organically. I wanna share one, one of the highlights about Felton. When a child is having a difficult moment, we all come out. Our director, our, I mean, our principal, vice principal, our general education teachers, understand the pride of our students, they're unique. I know them by their names, I call them my mijo, mija, come here. They're my children as well, they're our children, they're our community. What is unique is that the children understand who does they trust, and every morning they will show up with a smile, knowing that they're, they're gonna take, that we're gonna take care of them, that we're gonna provide them the best education we can, when others have told them that they couldn't. Thank you.
Minerva López.
Yo les dejo una pregunta. Si ustedes se aconsejaron a la superintendente, imagino que habló con unos padres de la Feltan para hacer su necesidad de los niños, porque son los más solicitados. Habló con ellos, con algunos padres.
I personally did not speak to, I personally did not speak to parents at Felton unless they were on the superintendent's advisory account.
Hola, ahora una pregunta a la superintendente. Usted dice que todas las, las juntas de la mesa directiva se habló de cerrar una escuela, ¿no es verdad? Porque yo hacía muchas juntas y nunca se habló plenamente que seguimos cerrando una escuela. Se habló de un comité, pero también ese comité nunca se dijo que era específicamente para, para cerrar una escuela. Entonces, ¿estamos nosotros mintiendo o usted?
El propósito del consilio.
Era solamente para la consigla de acción de una escuela. Era el único propósito del consilio para cerrar su escuela.
Okay, yo ahorita acabo de escuchar que dijo la mamá que ese consilio era para invitar a los papás para hablar de esto. Yo estoy césar. ¿Se está conjuntando?
No, no señora, no señora, la invitación era quien quería ser parte del consilio, eh, y el propósito del consilio era hablar y avisar, hacer asesorio a la superintendente para poder ver a cuál escuela se podría considerar para cerrar.
Otra pregunta, usted dijo que hace años las matrículas han estado bajando. Sí, porque se hicieron más salones en unas escuelas. Pero el salón de la A M no se hicieron hace años, se hicieron hace años. El edificio nuevo, el A B por ahí, un edificio nuevo. Si no había matrículas como usted dice hace años, ¿por qué se hicieron?
Yo, yo no estuve aquí cuando se quedaron aquí. Estuvo, estuve hasta mal informando. Pero yo no estuve aquí cuando se quedaron ese edificio, debería desjugarse en su equipo.
Ahora otra pregunta, dijo la señora, esas personas no se casen aquí. Aquí los que deberían haber estado son donde la rechaza, porque son los que van a estar.
Solamente quiero comentar que los edificios nuevos se hicieron fue un, ah, una beca en el estado por tener tantos salones portables que tenemos, se pudo hacer, era para poder reemplazar esos, ah, portales, salones portales. Pero yo no sé si portales es la palabra correcta, pero hay error en la.
Es la palabra correcta.
Oh, sí, eh, oh, muy bien, okay. Mary Colver.
I wanna say thank you very much for very informative and well-asked questions because a lot of my questions that I might be forward answered. I also wanna say, I feel like this decision has been very abrupt. I mean, I thought like, wow, I mean, a school closing like this year, and I'm just wondering, I've, I've been thinking about this just as we are here, because I completely changed my speech. What about having the sixth graders stay at the elementary schools this year to help with the transition? And just give us time to explore more options? I understand that. I understand that the district needs to remain solvent, and we need to consolidate. I completely understand that. But how we've really taken the time to gather everybody's feedbacks and really figure out what is best for the community in this very short amount of time of just a few months? So, you know, if we can do something that maybe is a temporary option to help with the transition and just give us more time to really process it and figure out, you know, with time and use the community, the time that they need to process it and absorb and transition. If we can afford that for one year and, you know, maybe make it easier for everybody just to consider that. So that's just my thought and suggestion.
Good evening. And speaking of behalf of the over 150 students, especially students and their families, we understand that the district is facing difficult decisions, but we are here to ensure that in the midst of these changes, our children, some of the most vulnerable in the system, are not behind the system. Felton Elementary has served as a lifelong lifeline for many of our students. It's closed without clear and inclusive plan for maintaining IDE services, risk violating their rights under the federal and state law. Under IDEA, Education Code, every student with an IDE is entitled to a pre-appropriate public education, F A P E. That means that the district must provide all services and support regardless of the school closures or property sales. If Felton closes and those services can be replicated, the district must fund replacement in a non-public or private special education school. And now five new laws passed in 2025 in the state of California. A B 438, A B 1938, A B 2173, S B 483, S B 939. Further strengthening, can I buy some time? Strengthen protections for students with disabilities. These laws... Thank you. Further strengthening protections for students with disabilities. These laws apply to every student in Lenex, and we ask the district to publicly confirm how it is implementing each one. But there's more. Under A B 1912 and the 2023 General Attorney General's guidance, any school closure must include an equity impact analysis, which kindly you recommended right now, but it's not fully, I have another question. With public input and protections against disproportionate harm. That hasn't happened here. Families were not meaningfully included in the closure of Felton. Aside from many special education students raised serious equity concerns, like such as on slide, on slide 22 says, S D C no longer centralized. No longer centralized, you're going to convert it to new centralized, two different classrooms, which is actually for me, the district. And they did the same thing, and I know as a volunteer that I observed and analyzed every single student, classroom, and special ed. They were trying to transition these kids to general education, and it was impossible. We respectfully request a public presentation of an equity impact analysis, written assurance that all I E Ps services... Gracias. Services will be maintained or improved. A transition plan that includes counseling, transportation, and staff continuity, in full compliance with A B 1912 and Attorney General's guidance. Our children deserve continuity, dignity, and equity. Let's make sure this process reflects that. And I have another question regarding on the slides regarding enrollment history. Since COVID-19 significantly changed family choices and attendance patterns, can the district share how it accounted to pandemic-related enrollment changes when presenting the data showing a long-term decline to students enrollment? This happened nationwide, not only in Lenex. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Becky Blanco. I'm the Assistant Superintendent of Instructional Services. I'll address the question regarding FAPE, right, regarding the... I think that there was, there's a little bit of misinformation. So, right now, our special ed classes at Felton, they will remain. Those will be special ed classes at other schools. So we are not wanting to just put our students in the general education setting. So if I may, Mr. Negrete is one of our special ed S D C classrooms, a wonderful teacher. So his class would transition to another school with all of the same or the same number of instructional aides, R B Ts, registered behavior technicians that we have. We have to remember, an I E P is a legal document. So if the I E P calls for services such as speech, such as OT, all of those services will remain the same, they will just be given in another school. And the same things that are being done in our special ed classes at Felton, it'll hopefully be our very same teachers, our very same staff. We know that we want to keep our special education staff. We have so many wonderful staff members and we have a need for them. So those, it'll be Mr. Negrete's class, but just in another school. It'll be Ms. Reyes's class in another school. But everything that is happening in that class, the same materials, the same curriculum, the same amount of staff will remain the same, just at a different campus.
And in terms of the equity impact report, we are working on that. That has to be presented to the Board of Education and to the community prior to a school closure recommendation.
But thank you very much for saying that, appreciate that, and also to the parents because I analyzed the information. I gathered it, I just didn't make it up. I analyzed it from the SAC, Sac Committee website. And I analyzed it from April 1st through September 30th. And it doesn't say anything like on the plan of, we work together in order to have an I E P, continuing I E P, no changes in resources, because whatever he had, it works.
Our special education S D C classes are going to remain the same as other school sites. Now, when we talk about inclusion, we are talking about inclusion and making our special education students be part of a larger community with more typical developing students. Because right now, there's a large concentration of special education classes at Felton. And we know that our parents are very happy Felton is a fabulous school, we understand that. But we want to make sure that our students, when they leave Felton, are able to also be okay in the general settings, right, of the world out there. So we want to make sure that we give them the exposure and works both ways, not only for our general education students, but also for our special education, but also our general education students at other schools. Everybody needs to be able to be included. So when we talk about inclusion, it's about being part of a community, of a school community that is not only special education. Because right now, at Felton, it's probably about 35, if not maybe closer to 40% of the population is special education. So that's what we talk about inclusion, is making them be part of the school community that doesn't have so many S D C classrooms, but it is not about taking away the S D C classroom. And I will say, thank you so much for quoting IDEA, thank you so much for the research. But there is, the research, not only in California, the research nationwide is about the need to ensure that our students are included in the general population, right? That is definitely what is the best practice, that is what is out there in the clearly stated in IDEA, educating our students in the least restrictive environment. But with that being said, we do plan to keep all of our special ed classes.
Okay. María Aster Espinosa.
Yes. No, it's okay. Perfect timing, God's perfect timing always. So, hi, Ms. Norma. So, my son was, he was in the spectrum, and Moffitt cannot accommodate to him. They advised me to bring him to Felton. I was raised in Lenex, I went to Moffitt, so I wanted my kids to go to Moffitt. My son ended up being accommodated at Felton, which was the best decision I ever did. Now my son is graduating eighth grade with principals on a roll. He has four general education classes. And, and actually in December, we're bumping up his triennial. Why? Because of what Mr. Negrete, Ms. Reyes, all the teams, the special education team that is at Felton. But my son was included at Felton. Because Felton did so great to my son, they did so great with my son, I also had my second son go to Felton. I would rather, Giovanni is out, he's gone, he's gone from Felton. But I don't care. I'd rather make the drive to bring my son to Felton for what Felton has to give. I want, it's not about... I'm sorry, can I take some time? I'm part of the statistics. I agree with what you guys are saying, children do need to be included. But why not bring the kids that understand the change to Felton than to bring the kids that don't understand? Thank you. Ms. Norma, thank you for everything you've done for my kids. My kid's going to have a great education, he's off to high school because of what Felton did. Thank you.
Hector Marquez.
Buenas tardes, ya lo entendí, que sí es, quiere llevar la educación. Pero yo estoy muy cómoda con mi niño, también es especial, y estoy muy cómoda con la clase que tiene, que son ellos. Creo que cuando no tienen un niño especial, uno no se, no entienden las diferencias. Pero mi niño, Artista, no tiene por qué acoplarse a los niños neuróticos. Ellos tienen que tratar de acoplarse un poquito a nuestros niños. Entonces, si quieren llevar a eso, yo lo que quiero es que más bien pongan una hora, o no sé, a los niños neuróticos que aprendan a tratar a los niños especiales. Porque a uno como mamá le da miedo de un niño especial, que esté en clase con niños neuróticos, no todos son iguales. Pero uno no sabe si pueden sufrir bullying o x cosas, porque los niños son muy diferentes. Estos niños no tienen paz, quizá no están tan quietos. Entonces mi niño no tiene por qué estar forzado a hacer lo que otros niños hacen, porque él no es igual. Entonces yo quiero que si se mueve, sea todo como es, lo que él tiene su comodidad. Yo sé que es bueno sacarlo a explorar y no ser, pero no tiene por qué él esforzarse a ser así. Entonces, yo la verdad estoy muy cómoda en Felton porque me lo han tratado muy bien, mi niño avanzado muchísimo. Gracias a Dios siempre es niño del mes, o así. Yo estoy muy contenta, entonces yo lo que quiero es que si la llevan allá, yo sea igual. Y no, mi niño no tiene por qué acoplarse a los niños neuróticos. Ellos tienen que tratar de acoplarse a los niños especiales y entender que ellos son diferentes. Porque muchos han parecido bullying, eso es, yo eso no pierdo para mí. Eso le da miedo a una mamá, de un niño artista o un niño especial.
Pátima Corral. Pátima. Seguimos con Yessenia Guerrero.
Good evening to everybody in the room. My name is Yessenia Guedo, I'm a teacher at Woodville Elementary. I'm actually a special education teacher at Woodville Elementary. One of the things that brought me to the podium is a concern. Because as I've been hearing, and yes, I've been keeping abreast of all the information that's being shared throughout the year, is the school, it used to be called a closure, now we're consolidating, is the fear of Proposition 39, and I don't think that's been mentioned in anything in the paperwork and the FAQs, about if we have a school that's not being used and utilized by the district, you can have charter schools come in and take, not ownership, but then they have the right to that property. And I am concerned about charter schools coming in because we would then be, we're going to be fighting for attendance once again. I mean, we brought up before in Felton, fighting for attendance. We would then have another issue with that, and I don't think that's been, I feel has not been addressed, about the possibility of charter schools swooping in and taking that property. The other thing is, you mentioned rental properties, the potential of renting that property, but there's no who or what you would rent it to. Because who are you renting it to? Or are we hazing it, we're raising it, we're getting rid of it, and then we're just selling the land? And so that's also a concern that I don't think has been addressed. And the third thing, in my last couple seconds, is what are we doing to actively recruit students? What is Lenex doing that is different from Eagle World to Top Horn to recruit students? And the reason people come to Lenex is because we have a phenomenal special ed program and other districts know this, and other parents know this, and that's why they come to Lenex. And that also helps us with money, because there are kids in seats. But again, what is Felton, what is Felton, what is Lenex doing, Felton's doing a lot, to actively recruit students? So, thank you.
Let me address the charter school question. We do have a legal opinion on that. There used to be a time where charter schools had first access to vacant properties. That has now changed, and I think it changed about three or four years ago. We do have a legal opinion, and we can include that and frequently ask questions to make sure that people understand charter school access to vacant school property.
I know I don't have time, but how is that different than, so what proposition or what law would that trump Proposition 39?
So Proposition 39 is essentially the...
School bonds.
For school bonds. And when you have school bonds, it's essentially districts are raising funds, are raising money to help build new schools via property taxes. And Proposition 39, when it passed, requires school districts that 55% of the population within that school district boundary agree to that general obligation bond. So that's the thrust behind Proposition 39.
And there's undeniable factor though, when you read it, about the charter schools and charter schools and vacant properties being available to them and vacant to them. Because that's one of the issues when you talk about Oakland, Oakland School District had that problem, and that's how they got so many charter schools. And just bringing up a point, I would like for that to be addressed.
And we will address that in the legal opinion.
Okay, sounds good, thank you.
In terms of the rental potential, until the Board of Education decides if and when they close a school, then they'll decide if they're going to use a property for educational purposes or not. And that's when they'll decide whether, what the property will be used for. So up until then, no decisions made whether it's a rental property. whether it's a rental property or what it's going to be used for. I know that was one of your questions. Okay. Jose Luis Becerra.
I'm going to quote Gandhi. "It is wrong and immoral to seek to escape the consequences of one act. You created this situation, and we pay for it." When Eric Medrano was here, he was driving students away, and it was during the pandemic. We had a meeting with you two, and he was put in the spotlight. And where is he now? He has no consequences of his actions. But let me tell you. One of the things that I see here is that you're putting somebody in a drunken life. Why do you... Why you don't go behind her? Put yourself in her position as well. The thing that I see is a big problem with a lot of incapable people to solve it. If you knew that we had this problem, you're abandoning a sitting ship instead of saying, "I will save this ship." Why do we have this situation? Why do we have so many students in one place? We didn't create it. You did. Why you drove people away, and now you claim that there's no enrollment because of your actions?
We have two more. Olga Medina.
Yo ya no tengo niños en la escuela de Felton, pero estaba ahí mi nieto. Ahorita es que año pasado, uno de ellos a la otra escuela. Pero yo todos los días llegaba a dejar a mi nieto, y era admirable ver cómo los maestros recibían a los niños con necesidades especiales. Es una cosa tan distinta, y a todos los veo así, que ustedes están pensando mover a todos estos niños para una escuela en vez de pensar que ellos psicológicamente les están afectando completamente sus vidas. No están afectando las de ustedes. Yo no sé en realidad si a veces. He escuchado muchas cosas. Ustedes podrán decir son chismes o mentiras, no sé. Pero espero un día, no le gano no ver un letrero que diga "Fuera de Felton", que diga "Constructora Bartez". Porque esto se está hablando en todos lados. Yo estudio en el Saupus College, y es cosa que se está hablando por todos lados. Que quieran cerrar Felton, porque ahí quieren construir. Esta constructora quiere venir a ocupar este lugar. Entonces, pensar en que los parking están deseando, "Ah, que ahí hay más parking para los maestros en Bufo", que ahí las clases están viejas, que tienen que gastar mucho. Y los niños, ¿qué? O lamentablemente, como nuestro país se está cambiando tanto, también aquí se está cambiando tanto.
María Guerrero.
Well, I'm sorry. I'm going to give you my backbit. Well, I don't know how to say this, because...
No se lo escucha, señora.
Oh, sorry. Well, I don't know how to say this, because I've been hearing everybody's moves and everything. But mostly for me, my opinion is that instead of worrying more about what we could do, about the communication, because I was not communicated by my school that we're going to have a meeting. I got communicated, because somebody was over there in elementary with my daughter, and I think somebody at the door communicating. But the thing that we're forgetting is not about if they're closing us, or not. You got to see as a parent, like, what is going to be the best for you? That was a good question you guys have. But to me, I felt it right now, like if I... Like if I didn't... I didn't wrote. I wrote a... I didn't even wrote nothing. I just did my name. But I didn't feel like talking, and I don't know if I want to talk now, because you know how I felt it right now? And I'm going to tell you what. I'm for Buford. But let me tell you. My daughter, I have two kids. They are in special ed next. And one of them, I have seven kids. And my third child, he was a special ed kid. He went to Buford. And let me tell you, my son works there, at Felton. But that's not the point. The point is, you guys worrying about closing a school, but then over here, I was here, I'm like, "A 30th grading Buford?" Oh, I know, like you guys said, the problem was, I don't know who whoever made it, that they decided to put all the kids in one school, because that's what I hear about Felton, that that's only the special ed kids. I don't know if that was right or wrong, but I... No, I really don't. That's why I'm saying it for them, so they can hear. No, they're hearing me. But the thing is, I'm seeing you as a parent focusing more about... Okay, focusing about more like, "Oh, don't close this." You know me, my... Me, I was like, "Okay, if they close Buford, I go over there." But you guys are not thinking about your kids. You got to teach them how to be responsible and independent. I have two special ed kids. Ninguna, exacto.
María Cordova.
Buenas noches. Yo quería dar un testimonio de que mi hijo, ahorita sentado, fue conmigo, estaba en clases especiales. Gracias a la escuela de Felton y a los maestros. Mi hijo ya está en las clases regulares. So, me gustaría que otros niños tuvieran la oportunidad que él tuvo y que no disfruten su futuro. También me gustaría invitar a los de la mesa directiva antes de que tome la decisión de si cerrar Felton, de que visiten la escuela y vean a los niños de educación especial y a toda la escuela en general para que vean cómo son las clases, cómo están los niños ahí en las aulas antes de que den una decisión final. Porque no sé en qué se van a basar a dar la decisión final si no visitan la escuela. Eso. Gracias.
Tenembarasa.
Hi, good evening. My name is Ben Barca Saad, a parent of two students that superintendent Felton Elementary now is LNS, that have currently assigned in the fourth grade at Felton. So, just looking at the slides, which are doing very informative, but I feel like they are translating the trends across the Lenox School District, not just Felton. Closing the school won't fix it. It would just hurt families. Felton is 10,000 square feet larger than Buford, with more classrooms and more room to grow. That's an asset, not a burden. Calling this plan least disturbing is misleading. For students, it's the most destructive as possible. Felton's special ed programs already model inclusivity and stability. Moving those kids for efficiency destroys their success. And a reminder, the superintendent position is appointed, not elected. The community voice should guide the decisions that affect our children. Our kids are not numbers. They deserve stability, belonging, and safety, a safety place to learn. When you close Felton, you don't just close classrooms. You break community issues. Let's all have the same.
Well, I want to thank everyone who participated tonight in sharing not only their questions, as well as their suggestions and their recommendations. And once again, I want to do validate all of your thoughts and know that we are listening to your suggestions. I know that we do have some members of our Board of Trustees here tonight that are listening as well. I want to thank, you know, Mr. Taylor for being here tonight, as well as our executive cabinet, our principals, as well as our directors. On behalf of the Board of Trustees and the entire district, I thank you for your attendance tonight. I do know that it is a difficult thing to process. Know that we are going to do everything in our power to make it a seamless transition as we continue to navigate through this process. Change can be hard, but it's also a process that we can grow stronger together as long as we are open-minded and listen and learn together. I thank you for your time tonight, and I encourage you to continue to reach out if you have any further questions. But as I... Like I said, I thank you for your time tonight, and this ends our town hall for tonight. If you have any other questions, you can continue to email me. There was an email that was provided in the email. So, please continue to reach out if you have any further questions for tonight. Thank you for your presence tonight, and please get home safely.